And Ms. Hemel, I forgot, she is, she said she's already seen the budget. And so she's leaving it up to you. So we're gonna go ahead and reconvene. I could sense your coming in bus.
Oh, thank you.
So go ahead, go right ahead.
So this is our third or fourth budget update workshop for the FY15 year. And just so you know, just wanna give you some background again, the process starts essentially when we make the FTE forecast, and this year was January. We then meet with all the department heads, the district department cost center administrators, and in February to kinda give them what we foresee the budget's gonna look like for the end of the year and for the next year. We also share with them essentially their last three years of actuals so they can see what they've been spending as compared to what they've been budgeting. So as when they prepare their budgets for the upcoming year, they can have a good idea where they've been and have to justify essentially why they're wanting to spend X dollars in their cost center. So we go through that whole meeting with them and essentially have them return back to their budgets. We start calling through them and looking at them and essentially making sure that they're not over budgeting in one area for an issue or something that there's not a need for. So we have those conversations and talks about that. We also meet in with the, meet with the school staff. In March, we overstaffing based on forecasted FTE, and we base their staffing on the forecasted FTE. So that's how essentially we come about making the majority of the budget. Remember, the state allocates our budget through the FEFP process, so they may dictate to us how we spend certain dollars through those line items in that FEFP. So we may see one item that goes up basically because the state is saying we have to put more resources in that area, so we have to make the adjustments in the budget. So if we see, you know, ebb and flow in the budget as far as up and down in some areas, that's usually why. So remember, we usually, the schools are based on their FTE, so their staffing is based on that as well as like the discretionary funding essentially. And at the districts, we look at their actual over the last three years and look and see what they're budgeting for this year. Now, we look at the budget that we put together for you today, we'll be comparing a lot of the budget to budget because we don't have the actuals completed for this year yet. We still have a couple payroll runs to go out, and we still have a couple AP runs to go out. So essentially, by the time we get through, you know, the July and the August period, we'll have a complete set of actuals that we can make some good comparisons to. But right now, we're looking at, you know, budget to budget, looking at where we're at, and we can make some fairly good assumptions as to what would be the forecasted end of the year results will be. So that's kinda how we look at it and how we do it. Remember, this is still a work in progress, but I'm very, feeling very good that the budget is looking very good for next year, as well as this year's current budget seems to be ending up very well, so.
You were dancing, I think, earlier in your office.
I was very happy. Very happy, pleased with what's going. I really do feel like, you know, we're starting to come up out of that hurdle. We overcome the Duke Energy situation. The only issue that I see now so far that is, that is, we're facing is the declining enrollment. I told you that last time. That seems to be the biggest hurdle that we're facing now and how to overcome that and making some of those hard choices and hard decisions on how to address those issues with declining enrollment. And I think we're making progress, and I think the budget has shown we've made that progress. So, once again, the big issue on this calendar of the date is, remember, we're gonna be going to the July 24th, I believe it is, 22nd, to approve the tentative budget. It'll be in the newspaper that Saturday beforehand. What we have to contend with is DOE, and when we get those final numbers in, because they do a second calculation based on the certified taxable value from the property appraiser, that goes up, I think, July 1st. They then get it, massage it, make changes to the FEOP, they make changes to the millage rates. So we have to get it and then have to work on it real quick and get it to the newspaper so they can get it advertised. That's always a very tricky and quick turnaround to make sure we get it properly advertised. And remember, we'll advertise the summering budget, we'll advertise the capital outlay millage, what we're gonna spend that on, and then if there is no increase in the millage, it'll be a notice of budget hearing, or it'll be a notice of proposed tax increase if there is an increase in the millage based on what is arriving. So we'll find that out when we get the final calculations. So you can see the taxable value, actually, you can see a little bit of an uptick, not much, but it's pretty well flat, but it's much better than going down where we've been going down the last four or five years. So that's a good sign, and I think, I think for the years to come, you'll start seeing this gradually starting to take back off. That's good news for us. Here's our tax budget from the abular taxes. You can see that the required local effort for this year is about 43.3 million, and next year it's about 44 million. Discretionary local effort's about the same, capital's about the same. So we're about on par where we were this year. And you can see what our collection is to date as of June 19th. We will get more collections in by the end of the year, and actually, we'll have to do probably an accrual for the end of the year, an accounts receivable essentially for the last August payment that we typically get. But you can see where we, where we're at, we collected about 49 million. And you can see how we are according to, as compared to budget, we've actually brought in about 98, 99% compared to the budget, which is very good. We have a very good track record of bringing in our taxes. I know Ms. Hemel and I were talking the other day, a lot of districts struggle to bring in 90 to 93%, and we're usually almost at 100%. So we're very, we're very fortunate, very lucky that we have a good tax collection. Once again, the FEFP and what I, you know, how I showed this before with the final conference report, remember, the state dictates to us how we're gonna spend our money and where our allocations are gonna go to. And those increases have to be budgeted in those particular areas. So sometimes we may see an area that has an increase, we say, well, this is because the state actually allocated the increase, so we have to budget for those increases. Because they have to essentially budget out, you bring this revenue, and then you, you bring it out as an appropriation. So essentially, we're looking at about $914,000 increase in the FEFP at the final conference report. Now, remember, we'll get that second conference report at the end of July, middle of July, so we can do the second calculation in the tentative budget. So these numbers are subject to change, which is the military. The .748 will not change, it'll stay the same. Your 1.5 capital outlay is the same. The only thing that potentially is gonna change is your required local effort, which is currently 5.114. That potentially will be the one that changes from the state, and that'll all be dictated upon the school taxable value, the certified from the property appraiser to see how many funds it'll, you know, it generates based on that military. Base to allocation is up, a little over $4,000 this year compared to 37.50 last year. That's a nice increase. We're getting close to that 0708 year, we're not quite there yet, but we're getting close.
But quite a bit of that went into categoricals.
Well, I can tell you that what they did is they rolled up that teacher salary allocation line on we had last year. They didn't fund that line on this year, they just rolled it up into the base to allocation. So you are correct, it was kind of a shell game.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, 'cause it does, and it looks a whole lot better than, than really we're able to.
So they just rolled it up into the, and then these are, you know, every year, we always have a different type of shell game. So you can see the, in graph form where we're at, we're not quite to the 0708 year, but we're getting close. It's actually, it looks much better, we're going up, so those are good signs.
Well, that's a mountain in the valley.
Yeah, exactly. And then our base FEFP funding is up a little over 5% from last year, at about 59 or 60 million dollars. And you can see that uptick going in, the base funding is going up as well as the BSA. Now, what's interesting is you see a steeper increase on the BSA because that is going up quicker than what our base funding is, is because we're losing kids. So our base funding is actually proportionally going down compared to the BSA, so you don't have that greater steep incline to your BSA. And then, of course, you know, we're down on the unweighted about a little under 2% and about 2% on the weighted. So from this fourth calculation, the unweighted was about 14,676. Now we're at 14,425 calculated. Now, what's interesting is, is they're still having some, I don't know, understanding calculations, how they're, how they're doing this whole FTE count now with the virtual. They're still going through some, some issues or learning curve, I guess, on how they're allocating those FTEs. So there's still some, hopefully some washing out to do at the end of the day, but I'm hoping that we can at least hit that 14,425 because we haven't been hitting our FTE forecast the last couple of years. So we're hopeful that we're gonna hit this one. And you can see the steady decline, both the weighted and unweighted over the last few years.
Do you think you can merge it schools, or is it just mortar and boards?
The, that's the villages past?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's for any school, but I'm not quite sure. I, I kinda relate to like a McKay Scholarship is what it looks like to me, but I felt it was like for any type of private school people were attending.
That's my thought, but if it was virtual and...
I haven't seen any virtual conversation of that, but we've been researching. So here's the snapshot of what we're looking at. So the blue column is essentially this year's projection for year end, and I'm happy to report to you that it looks like we're gonna come in pretty much like a balanced budget at the end of the day. So that's great news. We've certainly been watching that expense line and seeing how it is recovering, and we've been managing it, and we feel like we're gonna come in pretty close to balance, so.
And you've raised the fund balance by, you know, just a tiny bit, but we'll take it.
Yeah, and that really is a, is a, a big help and is going in the right direction. If you see your reserves down there, and you see on both columns, the reserves 350,000, that's for your inventories, you buy, you know, stock that's in the warehouse, you don't expense it till you actually use it. And then your restricted reserves at 1.9 million, that's essentially a lot of your categoricals and a lot to do with WTI. Those dollars come in, they have to be spent on those appropriations that are mandated. And then the assigned, those are the things that we mandate, that we roll over to like the schools, the discretionary accounts, SAI, things like that. So that's how, what, how those numbers break down. So if you look at the tentative budget for next year, currently, we're looking at about 116 million in revenue, and of course, wanting the same in expenses for, for a balanced budget. This is great news. You can see the last few years, actuals, we've been hitting the fund balance about 4.7 million, 4.3 million. We were estimating this year to hit it at about 3 million, so we've come through and we've actually kinda righted the ship, so to speak, all while we're having declining enrollment. So this is good news, we're looking for a good year, a good end to this year and a good start to next year. So through some of your decisions you've made, you've really made this budget come This is kinda the consolidated fund statement, it says about a $210 million budget in total. A little small, but that's how it's gonna kinda roll out as we look today as to where they're at by function. So you can see the debt service is a little over 4 million, and that's essentially for your bond payments, your lease payments for copy machines and phones, et cetera. Your capital projects, that's our capital budget that we put together every year. Food service, Mr. Pastoni still continues to run a, run a good ship at the food service department while providing excellent choices for the students and still maintaining a healthy P and L statement. And your other federal programs, those are your Title I grants, Title II grants, et cetera. And then your internal service, that's your health insurance fund. So we continue to look strong in the health insurance fund that's being managed, and we have to keep a minimal number of reserves there, so we continue to mandate that through our actuarial reports that we report every year to the state, we're actually sound. And this is the same thing by object, you can see how it all breaks out, same 210 million, and then you see how the salaries, benefits, et cetera, break out. And this is in a more consolidated nature compared to the budget and the actuals as of June 19th. The big impact you see there, the benefits, and I can tell you, FRS was a huge impact this year. Although the regular rate that we pay to FRS didn't change that much, it's the unfunded liability that really changed. So like I believe on the regular class, it was about .3, a third of a percent. On the board members, the elected officials, Ms. Hemel and y'all's elected officials, that went up 10%. So that was a huge impact on the unfunded liability. Senior management went up, I believe, a few or 3%.
And that was statewide?
Yeah, that's everybody, yeah, that's not just, that's all FRS recipients, cities, counties, whoever is involved in it. So that was a big impact, and that does show in our bottom line. That's essentially the biggest impact that we're seeing as far as on that benefit line. We've been trying to mitigate and manage the rest of the expenses, so.
The object for about 500, is that because that's a, the actuals is not recognized completely yet?
Well, the carryovers that you saw in the restricted and they put up into there, once we get to the final budget, it'll all be flowed through there, so you'll see it kinda.
So it's, we're not really down by 36, okay.
And here it is in the pie chart. And I always like to point out that your salaries and benefits essentially is about 82%. That's very much common on target. We've been running those numbers for several years, 80 to 82%, and that's pretty much of a common number. And then if you break down your salaries to see where the appropriations are, administration's down about 3%, you can see the majority of all the impact is in the classroom and the students. I know you'll see the board members down or up slightly, two impacts there. Essentially, we have a full, and I think Ms. Balfour came on last year, it's probably like, I think the pace started rolling in in August, so there's a slight little variance there. The, 'cause you, 166, 410 divided by 5, that's what you make, I mean, it's pretty obvious. But I, I know you, you wanna see that, and why is that up 5, over 5%? That was why, so.
We had four over there.
Yeah, yeah, so. And you can see it all broke down. You can see the majority of it is in the classroom teachers where it should be. We should be putting money in those classrooms and teachers to make sure we're meeting all the mandates for, for educational services. And then you'll see the big impact on your benefits, that's the FRS, that went up approximately 10%. That's where it's at. Slight increases on everything else, but the majority of it is, is the FRS. Nothing we can do about that, we have to pay it, we have to raise it, unless we opt out, but I don't think we wanna do that, so. So you can, it's interesting, you see the retirement, social security, and the health insurance are about a third, a third, a third. Those are your three big hits on your fringe benefits. And then your object three, all your professional services, in total, down a little, little over 8, almost 9%. Communications, that's your telephones. The big thing there is by, we switched over to Suncom, and it's really saved, really had a big impact by using the Suncom system as far as I guess. Travel's down over 22%. There's been some talk about travel recently, but we're actually down. So we're actually doing well. Garbage is down, recycling went down, and you know, we're trying to get even more on garbage, so we're still working on that one. And you can see how all breaks down. And then in your utilities, bottled gas is up, and it's, the reason for that variance is essentially it's, it's ace down there, the transportation bottle new welder and it uses propane gas as opposed to regular fuel, so that was the increase there. Plus propane has ticked up a little bit. But what's interesting to note is on electricity, you can see we're still holding the line on electricity, even though those rates are going up, we are still, still holding it. So very proud of what everyone's done with electricity and looking at how to mitigate the increases. Because, you know, not only do we, we have usage, you know, we have to manage that usage, but then you have to make sure you mitigate all the increases that the electric companies put out there when they raise their rates and their default rates. So we have been going, we haven't seen, we've been managing those increases for the last three, four, or five years, so that's...
What is the, I know, from the time you instituted to the, yeah, go back to refrigerator, refrigerator gate?
I would say it's two and a half or three million dollars in total of the...
That's what I thought it was.
It was, yeah.
And that was back in 09? Cause I remember, I remember.
It was 6 or 07, somewhere around that, yeah.
Yeah.
I had one of those.
We, I, I tell you, Mr. Billings, he's out there with his gun, he's checking.
He's dead.
But you can see, it works.
And other districts have actually come to look at us, right?
Well, they've also hired consultants for 200,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
I saw video have come on propane on buses.
Correct.
Do we have any?
No, we used to years ago, but what we have looked at is compressed natural gas. That's a different type of fuel. Mr. Whitestone actually is now using compressed natural gas out there. City of Tallahassee, the county of Leon, and the Leon County School District all went together on compressed natural gas. So we're actually just looking into it, it's a huge undertaking, I mean, there's a lot of variances out there, but we used to have propane on a few buses, now we're looking at the compressed natural gas. I can't tell you if it's good, bad, or different, but we are looking.
With this point, we're not shopping for buses, or are we?
Well, we are, and you'll see in the capital, we have about six or seven buses in, you can try to replenish.
And you're giving over to Silver River, bus seats, wasn't it six?
Four to six, I think it was.
Up to six.
Up to six, yeah.
Up to six, yeah, it's good to six.
And we've already identified those buses, they're older ones that were, you know, probably gonna go on the auction site, but they're tickled to death to get those buses, so. And you see diesel fuel up there, we budget about 1.5 million. You know, diesel is always a moving target, we kinda forecast, you know, and look to see what the, what those prices may be, and we try to budget for those, and we make modifications to that, to that budget as the year goes on, so. And that's, and you can see the biggest one, of course, is electricity and your utility budget. That's the big one, why we try to manage it so closely. Your, your five object, all your consumables, your textbooks, et cetera. You see, the textbooks right now, those will go out to the schools. Repair parts, tires and tubes, all those are going up, the white fleet, the buses, all those repairs are going up. And they're all dictated a lot by the price of oil because a lot of like tires are made out of those oil products and petroleum products. Interesting to note on the tires and tubes, we actually took advantage in FY13 and bought more tires than what we needed. The tire vendor actually warehoused them for us, so we took advantage of two-year-old, you know, a year-old pricing, they were able to warehouse them. So this past year, we had to purchase that many tires, and we already had them bought, so we didn't have to be hit with that increase in the tire prices. Fortunately, this, coming into this school year, that inventory is gone, so now we're gonna have to buy more tires this year and actually have to absorb that two-year price increase on the tire. So we took advantage of it while we could. Unfortunately, we couldn't buy like a, you know, complete warehouse full of them, but we took advantage as most as we could, so that's good news. The other thing we're gonna try to do is something that actually Crown introduced us to the gentleman here earlier for the Wellness Center, they actually have another offshoot that they do, they look at purchasing. And they have a opportunity to look at, and other school districts are looking at this and taking advantage of it, it's called a reverse auction, and we're gonna try with tires on the end of July, where essentially it's all online and vendors not knowing who's, who's online, who's bidding, but they can just see vendor A, B, C, D, and they bid against each other. And it's been very successful to where you really get some good pricing, so we're gonna try with tires and see how that goes, and then, and then other districts are seeing some great savings because, you know, people want the business, they see that, you know, there's an impact. There's no cost to the school district to use this service, so that's gonna be a, a pretty thing we're gonna look at. And you can see the breakdown there.
The, you mentioned the white fleet, though. We've continued to reduce the white fleet, or let it die.
Well, I think...
I think, did, did you really sell one of those?
Neons?
Yes.
And the Crown Bicks, one of the two, yeah, I think we sold, yeah. The Crown Dick, I think it was.
We should've had a ceremony for it.
Well, you know, I have told Ms. Farmer that we've got to start coming up with a long-range plan for the white fleet. Whatever that plan is, we've gotta have something in place to start looking at, because we're getting to the point now where the cars are getting very old, very high mileage, repairing them has become essentially costly. Are we spending more money on repair, looking to either buy one or in fact, looking at a different methodology, maybe you just, maybe employees use their own vehicles, you reimburse them? I don't know what it is, but we've gotta have a, a plan, because we haven't bought white fleet in many years. So there's a, there's definitely a need to look at that. We look at a leasing company like Enterprise, they'll come in and, we just couldn't really make that work cost effectively right now, so that was, we don't have any options. So you see on here, the big, that huge number that's sticking out is improvements other than buildings, 700%. And that's based on the 37.5, the tentative budget compared to the original budget of 4,500. That's WTI, you know, several years ago, Ms. Willis came here and got the approval for their tuition, it includes a capital improvement fee. So all the capital improvements that we do at WTI, we try to take out of that project, that capital improvement fee, so that's what that number signifies. Like the new sign they got, that came out of their capital improvement fee, so that's what that line is.
She's self-funding those.
That's correct.
And they're not coming out of the full form taxes?
Straight out of her tuition fee. And then the object seven, a few things in there, you see substitutes is the big one we're looking at. So, a little graphical illustration on the fund balance. The red line is essentially the total fund balance, and this line we call the restricted, but it's the total, basically at the end of the day, as far as what is left at the revenue expense. And then the blue line is the unrestricted, that's like the 3.95% at the bottom line after all your restrictions as far as your inventories and your discretionary and your carryovers. So what's interesting to see is we're holding steady on the total, but we're moving up on the unrestricted, and that's exactly where we wanna start going, we wanna see that uptick to get back up there to Mr. Bryant's range of about $5 million. So we're getting close. And I know this one is very small to see, but essentially, this is all the revenue generated through the general fund, based on their different categories, and I've gotta do something to give you this in a bigger, can you see it? Is it printed better? Okay.
It's more on screen, April 7, 3.
Any questions on that one? I mean... And then here's the appropriations by function, the budget compared to the budget of last year and the actuals. We're very, very close to what we budgeted last year, so, you know, with all the mitigations we made, we haven't had many increases. So as we look at the appropriations and we look at what's been significant, this was the page that I didn't have in your original packet, so when I sent you the email Friday, I told there's a few updates.
This is, this has been added too, when you sent us...
Right. So you can see, remember, we have contractually obligated steps and the instructional crossover, remember, we talked about that, we moved on it, we're gonna have to cross into the new placement schedule, so we estimated that to be about $800,000, that increase. FRS, we estimated about $600,000. Remember, we had to, we had to pick up the programmer analyst total fringe, salary and fringe from race to the top, because that funding ended, but we had to pick up that salary. Dual enrollment, that increase that we're estimating, both tuition and textbooks, that's been a real doozy. I mean, the auditors are actually identifying that as an area of concern they wanna look at. Not so much, I don't think it's a cost, but make sure it's all working and flowing, and then the cost will be secondary, but at least it's on the radar that someone's wanting to look at this to see how that's impacting us. Cost of parts and tires and everything, we estimate a couple hundred thousand dollars. The flood insurance that Ms. Ernst talked about, we did budget the entire increase in flood insurance, because we're not yet sure how that's gonna all work out at the end of the day, but we wanna make sure that we're covered. And crossing guards, we had to pick up a couple extra crossing guards this year for, in the city of Emerson.
That's where the sheriff said I can do it.
Yeah, and...
I didn't.
But we have to, we have to pick up those increases, and we do feel it's important to have those crossing guards, and one was at Line and Highland, and the other one was at Emerson Middle School, so in total, I think it was about 16,000 to pay those.
The city of Emerson picked up that cost last year and we told us a lot to...
Is Crystal River doing?
We, the first one remained the same.
That's the only increase. So looking at appropriation... So, looking at appropriation, you know, decreases, revenue increases, $600,000 savings from the Renaissance Center, estimating what we're looking at. About a million-dollar staff reductions due to inclining enrollment. That was no other reason other than that. And then, of course, the $915,000 increase in FEFP. So, that's how we've been trying to work through the system. And then, looking at our, our schools, you can see, majority of our schools have seen, you know, essentially, a little uptick, and that's based on, you know, if they've been allocated supplies, materials, and then, of course, all the increases for FRS and the steps, et cetera. That was elementary, middle, and high, and the special schools. You can see on the, on La Canto High, you see a big negative. Of course, remember, he lost 13 units. So, that's been a big impact over there. But remember, they also lost a lot of students, so that was in concert with their decline in students over the last couple of years. We've been working to get to that number. And then, here, correspondingly, the majority of this stuff is either slight increases in, and I'm telling you, the slight increases, they're all coming from that friendship in the steps, because there's really no increases in their discretionary spending.
I see you're going around turning off all the lights in 9/11 here.
Debt service fund, this is the fund we use to pay our lease payment, our bond payments, et cetera. It's transferred out of capital to debt service, and it flows through that fund. Food service fund, of course, Mr. Pistone continues to run a good, a good shop over there. He does not look to use any fund balance for the next coming year. We actually look at how he can provide those funds back to the schools. You know, he's renovating, doing some work at Citrus Springs Middle School Cafeteria Kitchen. He's remodeling the Pleasant Grove Elementary Kitchen, and those are in concert with facilities and construction, but, you know, Mr. Pistone makes sure he pays for all the equipment. He buys all the new cafeteria tables. I mean, so, we really work with Mr. Pistone closely to encourage him to put those dollars back in, which he's very supportive of, and wants to make sure his cafeterias are top-notch. And that's his appropriations there, you see. And he's coming in with a fund balance next year of about 2.3 million. Also, he's looking to find some, maybe some, he may buy some vehicles, maintenance trucks for his maintenance guys with the mill trade out there, so we're trying to reallocate those resources. Other federal programs, that's your Title I and your Title II. Those are the estimated revenues of about 7 million or 8 million, and then, correspondingly, those always balance out. Remember, your federal program, especially your title grants, you spend the money, then you seek reimbursement, some cost reimbursement. You don't get the money upfront. So, a lot of times in your financial statements, you'll see like a negative fund balance, and that's just timing. It's just because we haven't gotten the money yet from the state. Internal service fund, that's your health insurance fund, and it continues to run very healthy. At the end of the day, they're looking at close to a $3 million fund balance, which is essentially actuarially sound. I mean, they're doing very well managing that. And I hope that we can take advantage of the second location, potentially in a interlocal agreement. I think that would be a great asset to employees to see that there's another location they would want. The district staffing, no real huge changes here. That change in our staff, 9:00 or 4:00, essentially, we didn't have, we don't want to fill this anymore full-time. We just had her for a couple months last year. And then, finances, the same, even though they've kind of reallocated and reshipped to some of the positions, the total number's the same. This is 9:06, this is Mr. Chamberlain's department. He's down one. We did not fill one of his positions. He felt like he could make it work, and we also did this in concert, knowing that we were going to bring Peter on from the races at the top, and we're in, so. Student services, down slightly, those two, attendance assistants. Planning growth, the same. Co-compliance is down one, but they actually just shifted that one over to risk management. It's just an internal shift. And technology, the, those three district technologies, especially, you see a zero this year. Those are paid for at Title II.
Okay, that's how I wanted to ask. There's a question.
We still have them, but.
Yeah, they're Jerry, Matt.
I figured, did I?
And then, ESE is essentially the same. Allen's shop is the same. John, I think, is down one. If you can read that closely. Debt service is the same. Research and accounting is the same. Each are the same. And we're essentially, we're status quo.
Pretty tight.
Yeah. And then, these are the staffing plans of the schools you approved last meeting, so those haven't changed. Those are just reiterated what you've already done. The capital plan, and I know this is kind of small and it's hard to print it out, you probably can see it better than I, but this is the five-year capital plan. The significant thing to show you that, as we've had it budgeted out right now, our fund balance never drops below, I think, 7 million. So, that's probably pretty good. I never want it to go below 5 million in the capital, because you never know what's going to happen. Remember, we budget a lot of stuff, but it typically rolls, because we don't, you start those jobs in the summer, like they're doing now, the roofs, the air conditioners. Those funds never get expended, so they always roll. So, you typically have plenty of cash on hand to roll those things over. So, you can see that this is your bond payment. Your Christopher Primary School bond, I think, has one or two more payments left. Two more payments. You got one in October, one in April, I believe, October this year, April next year. Your Christopher Primary School will be paid off. That bond will be done. Then, what we'll do is we have to start a sinking fund for our high school. We have 11 years left on that, so we'll take the principal payment that would be going to that bond payment. The interest goes to the bondholders, people who have bought the bonds. The principal will go into a sinking fund. We'll actually purchase a forward delivery agreement, and then, we'll, in other words, agree to an interest rate that we'll make on that return for the next 11 years. And there's, there's maxims based on the IRS regs, and I think that in our case, it was, you can't buy it any higher than four and a quarter. I don't think we'll get close to that, but we'll try to get as much as we can to help offset the debt expense, so that's where that is. These are the kind of buses for Maryland and worse than that, what we're trying to replace. We've skipped a couple of years based on some of the downturn in the capital funding, so we're trying to, she did buy some this past year. We're trying to get her back into rotation and continue to buy some newer buses.
And even though our student population's down, we still have the same destiny?
We still have over buses that we're trying to, you know, to purchase to actually go back in the fleet. But that's not to say that, they may come into, this year, they say, you know, our buses are running strong. We might not need as many. We might need to replace three or four instead of seven or whatever. But right now, that's, because we've skipped a couple of years, so we have some order models, so you're looking at the cost of maintenance on those are going up too, so we try to mitigate that. Planning and growth management, we're looking at some, we budget some land, if we want to purchase land out there, so we put a few dollars in there. And then, we're also looking in the 16, 17-year, that Emmettus Middle School traffic light intention. And that's, and it works with FDOT, and that's one of the.
We can't get that done soon enough.
Yeah.
It's, no, it's not us holding it, it's D O T.
And this is TRC's capital budget. They have a lot of networking hardware. But the big thing here, of course, is the one-to-one expansion. We're still continuing to budget for that and continue to move forward. I think this year, Dr. Gettys, fifth grade.
And eighth grade at three middle schools.
Oh. You're right. That's right there. So, we continue to, we continue to roll that out and to meet that mandate and to give the kids the best tools we can.
This fifth grader's going to be tested.
What test?
This fifth grader's going to be tested on the, so.
Information services, a lot of that is just your enterprise software, your Skyward, et cetera. We have to reimburse from the capital then. And then, the food service, what we're always looking at as far as equipment needs for his kitchens. And then, maintenance, I know it's kind of small. We look at what we, I'm sorry, that's a copier and phone lease. That's what we reimburse ourselves in the debt service fund. And we made our last payment to Dell. So, we're actually, Dr. Gettys is being with Dell shortly to figure out the final steps, but the final payment, I believe, was made. So, we are hopefully in ownership now of our computers that has not paid off. Co-compliance, those issues with any type of health and safety, hazardous materials, et cetera, we have budgeted efforts to address those issues. And then, the maintenance budget, looking through what all they pay for. The capital general was being reimbursed. And, you know, Mr. Calasanti has a wide array of issues and repairs and everything they tackle every day, so.
Pleasant Grove's roof looks like it's.
Yeah, you know, they start about 2:00 in the morning. The first crew gets there and kind of dries everything out. The next crew gets in about 3:00 to start looking at it. And, you know, you've got Eric out there, you've got Dick out there, you've got Buzz out there for me. They're all out there kind of bird-dogging the job, make sure it gets done properly, so.
I saw Crystal River's floor looks like they did some preliminary laying out of it. Oh, my gosh, they just got a huge new weight room. We didn't, we just took that at the hallway, but now, it's, it is, it's an enormous size, so that was a good move there. And that's, all of that just seems to be going.
The best thing to me was we moved the electrical from inside.
Oh, that is so good.
And that was just.
Makes sense.
And these are Allen's earmarks for next, for this 14, 15-year. Pretty much everything we've talked to you about before on his needs. And you'll see in the out years, we start getting, you know, jobs are starting to get a little thinner, because we're trying to make sure we stretch every dollar we can. But there's still roofing, there's still air conditioning. Those are the two main things, roofing and air conditioning. Kitchens, those are the big things. Fire alarm upgrades. You know, we're currently doing the La Canto Middle, we're upgrading their whole electrical system there too, and then finishing the facade with La Canto High. There's numerous jobs going on throughout the summer, whether maybe punching a hole in a wall to create a window, or, you know, putting new doors in. I mean, there's just, all over the district, we're doing work, you know, all day long. This is our, the transfers for outside, kind of summary page. That's kind of it. I think, I think, I think we've put together a pretty good budget for this year. We are coming in balanced. I think we're very healthy. I think we're kind of starting to see the upswing. We're providing and meeting all the mandates for the debt services world, and things are looking good. Questions, comments?
I was just thinking, maybe to increase money in the school system, hiring you out to Washington for every period to balance everything.
Well, they don't have a mandate to have a balance, but.
That may be.
Outstanding.
Thanks, y'all.
I'll be up there later dancing with you, or maybe at least with Tammy.
Tammy worked, did the excellent job, I mean.
Really? And we've got to thank, you know, our administrators, our staff members that have come to the table every time we've needed to balance this. It is not by accident that we are here.
It would be nice to have a year that FTE hits, we don't have any hiccups with taxable revenue, tax revenue, and then, we can just have a nice year that we can actually see the results of what we've been doing. Instead of going out and telling people, "We need to cut your budget, cut your budget", for eight years, that gets kind of old.
Where you hit your bottom.
Yeah.
Where you come through those tracks.
Everything's very logical, makes so much sense, things that we thought, makes sense to deal with.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you.
With that, I believe we can adjourn the workshop. And if board members, if you have no objection, I'm going to try and just push us through and see if we can finish this meeting and close us out. So, I'm going to adjourn that. I'm going to open a special meeting. I've got, I've got some hints from, from the.
Just ask for a handout.
Oh, got it. And I'm going to ask if we can adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent? I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Boundford, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0. Citizens' comments? Do you have any green cards?
No.
No green cards. Business and sports services.
Good afternoon. I would like to request approval of the instructional and support recommendations.
How many job openings do we have right now?
33 instructional and 13 support.
I'm sorry, say that again.
33 instructional and 13 support. And we do have a team down at the TCHN, USF today.
I think 21 of those are elementary, which is probably what's going to go down at this time of year. I must say, good to find us, they want to have time to drop.
Yeah, I thought you were going to abandon that.
I wanted to, obviously, legally, the West would call me down.
And I, also, Mr. Calasanti? That's going to be a, I mean, I know it's a ways off, but.
I'll keep him as long as I can.
Yeah? He's just trying to go, you know, get season tickets to the Red Sox game.
Yeah. That's his goal. I wonder, do you have people, and probably you already know, to train these people that are going to be linear, they have assistants, principals, and all of that, but are they there and going through all the same steps? Because it's hard to replace people.
When given the opportunity, we like to bring, when there's a transition period like that, we like to bring the new hire on at least a couple of weeks prior to the departure of the person, incoming person there, so on the job training. Yes, ma'am, we try to work around that.
I'd like to improve the instructional and support recommendations. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the instructional and support recommendations. Any discussion?
Same, please.
Yes, ma'am. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0. And Mr. Dixon?
Here for the YMCA before and after care contract. Currently, we have a number of summer programs with the YMCA. We've done those through the facility use agreements since they've been doing these. And we also, last year, did the before and after daycare at home at SASS Elementary, utilizing the facility use agreement. So, now that we're doing this more or less permanently at all the elementary school sites, and this is taking the place of the WTI program, we have Mr. Bradshaw's prepared contract for the YMCA.
This is in relation to the bid, when they bid it out that YMCA wanted it. You know, but there is one change that needs to be made in the contract, and I apologize, although I didn't send over the absolute last version, but under paragraph four of compensation, there should be one more sentence added at the end. Should the YMCA provide services outside of the agreed-upon hours, the YMCA will be responsible for the payment of custodians. That's the only change. I don't know why that didn't make it in the version that you have, if y'all are.
And that's similar to what we do, I think, with our interlocal agreement with the Board of County Commission as well.
Just curious about the staffing. Were they able to absorb the folks that we had from WTI into their?
We were able to hire some if they were in the district, if they were in the school district, and made some, hired some of the employees.
Okay.
And Mr. Bishop's support, very close with several of them. Try and make sure that they're being interviewed and then process.
Thank you for that. So, those staff members that wanted the opportunity to work with the program, thank you very much for doing it. Appreciate it.
I can't guarantee everyone everybody's all with, they had an interview, they had the opportunity to sell themselves.
They have it. Thank you.
Good for, good, good.
Okay. At this point.
Any more discussion?
Okay. Ready?
Yeah, I don't think we've had a motion.
I'll make the motion then, to accept the YMCA contract as written between Sun Coast to provide before and after...
Excuse me, Ms. Bountford, we need to modify.
As modified?
As modified, thank you, as modified as described in the minutes by our attorney, Wes Bradshaw.
Yep. I just need a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bountford, a second by Ms. Bryant, to authorize the chairperson to execute final agreement between Citrus County School Board of Florida and the YMCA of Sun Coast to provide before and after school at the elementary school in the modified agreement. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0.
Next, I have to approve the lease agreement between Citrus County School Board and Silver River Mentoring and Instruction. This is the facility lease agreement. I think directly you've already approved everything, but this is a separate agreement Mr. Bradshaw wrote up with them, and because we're actually leasing the facility.
I would approve the lease agreement between Citrus County and West.
There are some changes, and I'll tell you why. In trying to get this onto this board meeting, I prepared the lease agreement, Mr. Blocker placed it on the board meeting, and it went over to Cermi's attorney, who, we made a couple modifications last week, so I handed you, when I entered today, the actual corrected one, but I can go over what those changes are real quick. In paragraph seven, it indicated that the Leacy will pay the property taxes, which there are no property taxes because it's a, you know, there are five ones under nonprofit, right? So there's not going to be any of that. Under paragraph eight, under insurance, they're not going to carry fire or other casually damaged, those types of things, we already have it covered, but they do agree to be responsible for maintaining the insurance coverage on all of their own personal items. And also, they have to maintain all the insurance coverage that is underneath the original agreement that we had entered into with them. And then in paragraph nine B, it was, I kind of got it duplicated where each of us were taking care of, like, the plumbing and things. Outside of negligence on their part, you know, we've agreed to maintain the facilities, they're just going, they're going to maintain it, kind of broom swept, janitorial services, but I did delete out a few of those items where they were initially responsible for it, so, and outside of that, those were the only changes that were made. But you should have a final copy of it, was the one that I presented to you when I came in. Yes, ma'am.
So, go ahead.
We just need an emotion with, as modified?
I would take just a motion as modified, because then you can use the contract that I provided to you.
Okay, I approve, a big motion to approve the lease agreement with Citrus County School Board and Silver River Mentoring and Instruction, as modified. A second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the lease agreement between Citrus County School Board and Silver River Mentoring and Instruction Incorporated, effective July 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2015, as modified. Any discussion?
I'm just curious, as far as the $3,000 figure, how was that derived?
We negotiated a number.
Back and forth, kind of comparing what they were doing.
And at the end of the year, we may be able to negotiate some more, depending on how their year ended. This is like the first year, so we're just trying to kind of...
Get your feet wet.
Right.
No problem, thank you. That's it.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 4-0. Good afternoon, Ms. Regina.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Thank you, I'm bringing before you the Citrus County Health Services Program contract. This is a yearly contract between Citrus County Health and our department of our school. Any questions? Okay, I would like to share with you, the contract stays the same, there possibly could be a difference in the money allocation. It would be $10,000 less than the first proposal of $99,485. With the $89,485, we still could meet the requirements of the contract, two parent facilitators, and a RN.
Are they reducing the amount? Is it going to be a reduced amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you want them to approve it at...
At the reduced amount, yes.
So, approve at the reduced amount, and what is that amount?
$89,000.
Okay, $89,000. Even.
$89,485. They're reducing it $10,000.
Okay.
$485, and...
Yeah, just the reduced $10,000.
I would approve the Citrus County Health Services Program contract of 2014, 2015, with an $89,485.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bountford, to approve the Citrus County Health Services Program contract for the school year 2014, 2015, with a reduced amount Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
I bring to you today the articulation agreement for dual enrollment remediation, career pathways, and teacher preparation between Citrus County Schools and the College of Central Florida. I understand at the last forum meeting, there was some question regarding the amounts regarding dual enrollment. Legislation only changed two pieces of the dual enrollment payment. One of those was to clarify that summer dual enrollment is paid directly from the state to the college for any students who were enrolled. And it also clarified the piece of information regarding if we have a college teacher come onto our campus and actually teach a dual enrollment class. And we do not have that happening in Citrus County at this point in time. We only have students either going full-time to CF, or we have our teacher teaching a course on campus. This year, our original bill that came from CF was for $132,000. That was billed at the full time, at the full rate, and because of the auditor, that was what we had to have. Then, in turn, we actually owed a little over $127,000. Once we started working with CF, there was some billing issues that we were able to take care of. Ultimately, coming back to us was a check for close to $64,000, and our net cost for last year for dual enrollment tuition was right around $63,700.
Is that the same going directly from state to the college?
For the summer only, okay? And I will tell you that we were very lucky in that CF worked with us, and I cannot tell you how wonderful Steve Ash at the college has been, working, trying to get our billing and everything taken care of. Tammy has really helped us as well, trying to figure out how all of this works, because this was a new experience for all of us. The agreement that you see before you today is basically the same as last year, with some clarifying words here and there, to make sure that the agreement is more clear. We also took, we had an, one appendix in the back of the agreement last year, and it has now moved from one appendix to, I believe it's 20 different appendices. And that is to go with the career pathways information, so that each individual program has its own agreement, and so that when we have students going, we can actually hand them the agreement, so that the parents can see and take that with them, in order to be able to clarify what credits are available if they fulfill the requirements of the career pathway agreement.
Ms. Nobles, the 63.7, that is over and above the FTE that they would, the allocation that they would get? They would get also the FTE allocation for that period, for that course as well?
We get a piece of...
Both, yes.
And we, we get a piece of, on a dual enrollment?
If they're...
No, I'm sorry, if they are on their campus? If we have one of our students go to their campus?
We're still getting FTE, we are under a section to pay it back.
And then we pay it back, but is that in that 63.7, or is that over and above?
That's the net.
That's the net after that, okay. And then, that does not include our books and textbooks?
Not including textbooks. We received an allocation of $21,000 this year. We have spent around $38,000 so, thus far, for textbooks.
If I am a student, or I have, if we have a student that is a high schooler, they're a junior, and they take two dual enrollment classes during the school year, and they take two virtual classes online during that same period, how much money are we getting for that student? Because they're still taking two courses in our school system.
If you have P, those two courses, virtual, goes, that FTE goes. There's only one full FTE, or how, give you two?
Take a piece.
So that's what I'm saying, so if they take, they're taking, they're taking six courses, two at the campus, at CF, two virtually, and two at our schools. And how much are we getting?
We get about two thirds.
We'll still get, I didn't know if we would get it...
We still have FTE for the dual enrollment, we just have to pay it out to prices, the college, virtually, we'll...
So, but really, then, it's a pass-through as far as with the others, so we still are educating them on two courses that we're not getting funded, then?
Well, luckily, at least we're paying, we get half, because of it being, the actual tuition rate is 71.98, and then we're getting half of it back for our help with dual enrollment. Thanks to Ms. Hemel, and...
But then we also have to pay the textbooks out on it, too, so that pretty much washes a good portion of that back out. So, I was going to say, by the time we're done, we basically are still getting not funded for two courses that we're teaching them at their school. Well, is that, but that, except the only difference, Mr. Clutter, is that we were mandated to let them take the virtual. And we didn't, and we wouldn't get, now they take that virtual off the top from us, which we didn't used to have.
It's all appropriate.
Right.
And if they qualify for dual enrollment, we really can't tell them no, either.
Right. Yeah, if, in, in both cases, I don't think we, there's any discussion, even if guidance said it's really not in your best interest, so...
Yeah, the only time that we tell them no is when they've taken the class and failed it.
Mm-hmm.
Because the college feels that they, in some cases, need to wait till their maturity level is, that they're going to go to college class and pass it.
Makes sense.
Makes totally sense.
But the virtual, they can just keep taking?
So any questions regarding the agreement?
We just need a motion.
I do, the 63,700, just an estimate of how many students that represents, and a little...
It was about 40 students per high school. Some of them took one class, some of them took three classes. It was just a kind of a, I believe it was 138 courses overall, with about 100 students, or maybe just a little bit less than that.
Thank you.
More taking it in the spring than in the fall.
Thank you. Excellent.
Tammy, I move to approve the dual enrollment agreement, including career pathways, remediation, and teacher preparation between the District Board of Trustees of the College of Central Florida and Citrus County School Board for the 2014, 15 school year.
I want to ask, yeah, I do, I want to ask, now, is your back?
Oh, sorry.
When I came on board last June, this issue came up, and I recused myself because of my board duties with CF. Now, you, I knew you took the time to research this, you contacted people at the state, and there is no conflict, and I know as far as form, you, you probably need my vote, so, looking at that, we haven't had any changes, there's not been any kind of statute passed that'll sneak up, so at this point, my vote is okay of the law.
We have a response, a formal...
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
But if Ms. Bryant had to continually recuse herself having to do anything with Crystal River High School?
Because she... The benefit of taking it with her.
But isn't there a financial benefit to Ms. Bountford?
I have to pay, and I don't get any...
There's no, so therefore, there's not.
I have a written, a formal opinion, and I have that.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so we're...
We, the board was also told, a separate thing from the same board, at a different meeting.
Well, I don't want to compromise this board, this board's decision.
Well, I think by statute, though, she has to vote. You can't, you can't just not vote on an issue, so you have to vote, or you have to other things.
She didn't vote.
No, no, or you have to abstain, and then file the paperwork and abstaining.
You don't have to vote, or you have to recuse yourself from voting and file the appropriate paperwork with the clerk, which would be the...
And it's been cleared by the State Ethics Committee from the beginning, but, okay, let's, let's call the vote.
We need a second. Second, Ms. Powers.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the dual enrollment agreement, including career pathways, remediation, and teacher preparation between the District Board of Trustees for the College of Central Florida and the Citrus County School Board for the 2014, 2015 school year. Is there anyone that has any more conversation? They're being done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 4-0. Mr. Gaddis, Dr. Gaddis.
Last, but not least. I have before you a request to approve the purchase of an Apple iPad. I am accorded to our 1-1 implementation plan.
I would to approve the purchase of Apple iPads, second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers, to, I'm looking for the verbiage, it just looks like, you know, it just wasn't there, just to approve the Apple iPad purchase. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 4-0.
I think you guys are hungry, that was...
We're seeing the iPad, you know.
I'll just say that the implementation transition to our 1-to-1 is going extremely well, and if you have any questions, or want to see anything, an actual touch base, we'll be glad to share.
It's been fun to see you, man, and thank you.
Gentlemen, do you have anything over there? Mine? Okay, Ms. Bryant?
Yes, I do. I attended our school board's association, which is board of directors meeting, which is this meeting. I went to a meeting called Questions You Should Ask Your Top Financial Product. A packet of stuff for you.
Who taught that class?
That was a good one.
Do you remember?
It was somebody from Orange County.
Was it, I was wondering if it was Gretchen?
It was Orange County.
Oh, okay, no, then it wasn't Gretchen.
I have a packet for you, Mr. Blocker.
Gretchen usually does it, that's why.
I heard about that last year.
It was a good thing.
Did you go to the legislative update?
I didn't.
Was it, did they do a nice job?
That was excellent job. So, the doctor hadn't signed anything at that point, so, we didn't know.
We didn't know.
Yeah. That was a good four hours, though.
The legislative update was four hours?
Okay, maybe three.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's usually, I mean, that's the, the one to go to, so...
At the education foundation meeting on the 19th, several of you were there, and then you left, and then they started tabling all of the stuff until our July meeting, I didn't think we were even going to meet in July, but expect questions from the powers that be, because we've got all this money that we're requesting help with, and they're trying to figure out if this is something we need to spend our money on, just so you know.
Ms., are you going to talk about this?
Yeah, and Mr. Clutter, you want to come up also on this?
Mr. Clutter and I attended that meeting at the beginning, and these were the requests that we had given the foundation, and...
that we had given the foundation. And if you notice on the very last column, those are things they've already approved. And then the ones, I need Dr. Reed to talk about the approved items, the rejected expenditures, and then the table items. Table items...
But you have this.
Thank you. You're welcome. The table items such as the science fair, math field day.
The tutors?
I know. They, the Suncoast Credit Union has always funded a portion of that. We asked if they would fund the entire amount on the science fair and that. So, I think Ms. Rogers is going to...
I'm meeting with her tomorrow in the morning, about 10 o'clock, and we're going to talk about those two pieces, the science fair and the math, why it has actually increased. So, we're going to talk tomorrow.
The avid visitation, they used to pay that, didn't they, Mr. Clutter?
Yes. What, what, there was a specific portion. I forget who. I have to find out what that was, but they have been, yes.
The River Project, they, they're waiting on, the River Project has the rollover dollars, and they're just asking for clarification on the rollover dollars. The gifted education, they're just asking for more information on that piece. And then, as you can read the third column from the last rejected expenditure, the tutors, they have maintained a swim program and volunteer $200 pen. And on the swim program, you know, we currently do that in the third grade. And our elementary principals and Mr. Hebert, our, Mr. Park, and Parva, a lot of discussion has been to move that to the pre-K program, because all their research, and I think you all are thinking of that too, that the drownings happen before kids start school.
Ages three to five. No, I'm just saying, the ages three to five had to be, so what Mr. Hebert had actually done during those, one of those principal breakouts, they actually looked at that data of drownings for students in Florida of children, and they basically said, "Well, if that's where the data is showing us, why don't we actually, if we are going to continue with it, move it from grade three to pre-K?" And that would basically be 30 students per school. That is why, when I went to the group the other day, I basically said it wouldn't be that 25, I think, which was originally, but it would be 14,500 after talking with the district.
So, if that's okay with you, we like to pursue that to the pre-K program. And we're still working with the live, we're going to see if they're not willing to do that.
And that makes so much sense, really, where it actually fits. Thank you.
So, we'll keep you posted on the rest of these. As for the average tutor, we plan with the middle school principals, they may be able to pay for something that out of their $1, the high students, and I'll be able to, because they can obviously pay them $1. And as for the academic team, we'll go with that back in the budget.
I, that just to me makes no sense. It's such a promotion.
Thank you. That sets up the last meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for the follow-up. We're all, appreciate you guys.
I guess all I have is this.
Thank you. Ms. Balfour?
Again, I was down in the Tampa area with the Cooley School Board Association meeting. I attended the workshops on Wednesday, and I attended one of the workshops that she was describing about the budget questions. And it was interesting. They were just hitting one highlight after another. What do you need to ask your budget finance directors? So, it'll be interesting. And most of it, you're so good at following up and giving us that information before it's, it's even requested. So, a lot of it was repetition that I noticed. So, anyway, I don't think you have any concerns on that. Other than that, I want to pass the ball.
I'm, I'm all set too. There's nothing then coming before us. We are adjourned.